Do you have any idea?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Hey Tara, did you have fun?
Some more.
Well, you can see on my pages that I've changed. It's okay. We found it, it's okay. I'm surprised Kevin didn't contact you. Yes?
Bob, you feeling okay over there? Got here kinda early.
How you all doing? Where are you going? I was gonna start, but since April, we're gonna have to wait. Okay. All right, good evening, folks. I'm gonna start this meeting. If you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Open call.
Here.
Alderman Rose.
Here.
Colin Osteen.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Morella. Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Eric Harrison.
Here. All right, we do have a quorum. We're gonna start off tonight with the citizens' communications. This is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and the board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Any questions or comments for the mayor and the board may also be sent to the city clerk at T B E R R E T H at OsageBeach.org no later than 10:00 a.m. on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizens' communications section of the agenda. The Board of Aldermen will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will it respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the board welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board? Please come on up. If you've not already signed in, please sign in. You got that.
My name is Al Ruthvert. I'm the president of the Midwest Blue Oval Club. I have with me a wife friend who's a registration.
Hey, Al, I'm sorry. Would you mind writing into the microphone for... Perfect, thank you.
That better?
Thank you, yes.
I've also got Jerry Howe, who is our secretary, and Greg Howe, who is our treasurer. We are here, we are doing a car show, we do car shows for charity. We've been doing these since 2014. This is our first one down here, so we thought it was only right that we would come down, introduce ourselves, so you folks know what we're up to. We're a 501(c)(3) organization. The IRS has designated us as that. We have been chartered by the state of Missouri as a 501(c)(3). Since 2014, we have donated almost, well, actually, almost $160,000 to all local charities. By the end of this year, after this car show and at the grand glaze, we will have donated probably close to $175,000. We have two charities that we've designated already that we will be the recipients. One is a changing table here in Osage Beach, and the other is a lamb house in Camden. So, most, most of our donations come from the car show participants. They pay to show their cars. The other portion, the large portion, usually comes from sponsorships from local businesses. And, to be honest, we're hurting a little bit down here, but I can understand you probably... Some of you got letters or emails. I know Devin did. And you're probably wondering, well, who are these people wanting money? Well, now you know, we're the people wanting money. So, you know, if you could help us out. There are two people I know can help us out. I think you've already said you would be there to pick out a mayor's choice. I see the police chief here. We have a police chief's choice. So if you would be available on Saturday, the 25th, around noon, or one of your, one of your officers to pick out a person or a car for that award, that would be great. And if you have any pull with the fire department, we have a fire chief's choice as well. So, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them now, or if you want to, if you want to talk to us after the meeting, I will be available then as well.
Yeah, if you don't, are you gonna be around for the new business section of this? Cause, and we can...
I will be.
Perfect. If you don't mind, we'll leave this citizens' communication now, and then during that, I'll ask the board at that time if they have any questions for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, we'll sing none. We're gonna move on to, we're gonna do these three separate motions. I understand we have some questions on a couple, so we're gonna start with the minutes from the Board of Aldermen meeting September 23rd, 2025. Do you have any comments or questions from the board on this, or...
Kevin gave me a call and I made the changes already.
Okay. We all good then?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 23rd meeting?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do you have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rose, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Minutes from the September 23rd have been approved. Next, we have the bills list, October 16th.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I haven't noticed that in minutes. Yeah, I gotta do October 2nd. We have two sets of minutes.
We should make it into one, but that's okay. Just do another, just do another set of minutes.
Cause they, they said just the September 23rd, but we also got the October 2nd.
Okay, I'm sorry, on the same line, yep.
Normally, we do minutes together.
You're right, you're right.
This is a meeting, we have two different sets.
All right, so any questions on October 2nd minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. October 2nd has also been approved. Next, moving on to the bills list, October 16th, 2025. And Tara, do you have questions, comments on this one as well?
I'm gonna leave this up to Devin.
This is just an amended bills list. There was a couple bills on there that were turned in for payment that should not have been, so they have been removed.
Okay, but corrected packet is out, though, correct?
It will be out there.
Okay.
It's in front of you. The one that's in front of you in paper form is the corrected bills list.
Very good.
Yes, and I will add it to the packet and amend it online.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve the bills list as amended?
Motion to approve the amended.
Alderman Rucker, who is over there? I didn't hear. Alderman Collins, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Bills list, October 16th has already been passed. Next, we have the new liquor license for Me Gusto S L L C. Alderman Hoffman, is everything in order?
It is indeed.
All right, any comments or questions on that? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Alderman Rose over there? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All right, first item unfinished business, Bill 25-76, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Dogwood Animal Shelter, Inc., second reading. I'll go ahead and tell you.
You've got the financial update.
Oh, my goodness, what's going on? My apologies, financial update.
That gonna be for me?
Yes, you go ahead and take that.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna start this meeting all over. Devin, like, city administrator.
Our sales tax is still a little under for this time of year. Not terrible, about 2.1% under budget, but we did have a record sales tax month for October, which reflects August sales. So I'm hopeful that with the nice weather and we can finish out the year strong. Overall, budget-wide, our revenues are under budget by 7%, but our expenditures are under budget by over 24%. So we are doing fine currently. Happy to answer any questions?
Anybody have questions for Devin? All right, thank you very much. Won't forget that again. Maybe. All right, next, we have first item of unfinished business, Bill 25-76, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Dogwood Animal Shelter. This is a second reading. As you remember, we tabled this a couple of meetings ago. There was some information on the contract between us and Dogwood Animal Shelter that needed cleaned up. That has since been cleaned up, and as you know, it's something I certainly support. It'll take some of the time away from our, our, our police officers and our public works people and working in conjunction with Dogwood Animal Shelter to take care of pets, we find. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or Cole will as well. Alderman Osteen.
I've got a few comments regarding this. First of all, I applaud the city's decision to enter a partnership with the Dogwood Animal Shelter for all of the stray and abandoned animals within the city. I've always been a huge supporter of all the shelters in the area, the Dogwood Animal Shelter, the Blue Moon Sanctuary, the Forget May Not Horse Rescue, et cetera. I understand that for every animal those organizations take in, there are exorbitant costs for veterinary care, food, medicine, staffing, boarding, et cetera, et cetera. So once again, I fully support the animal shelter. The issue I have, though, is with the amount that's being presented to us with a flat fee of $10,000 for those services. According to my information, year-to-date, we have submitted six animals to the shelter, last year, two. At a flat fee of $10,000, I don't believe that basically it justifies the amount of animals we are turning over to the shelter. I am not opposed to budgeting $10,000 to utilize the animal shelter services, but I feel it should be based on a more of a per-animal number as opposed to a flat fee. That $10,000 flat fee, to me, feels like it's more of a community investment or a gift in kind. I, I, I don't think the services that we're acquiring or requesting from them justifies the dollars. And once again, I support the animal shelter 100%. And I, for the record, I basically, for the last 30 years, literally, all of my pets have come from shelters or strays. In fact, two of my animals have come from the Dogwood Animal Shelter. So it's not that I'm anti-Dogwood Animal Shelter, fully support what they do, but once again, I don't think the dollars justify the service.
And I can answer that, because when we had a meeting with myself and Eric and, and the chief and Tina from Dogwood Animal Shelter, we started looking at that, and the number of dogs after winter, those were the ones that, where we exhausted all of our time and resources to get them over there. We have a policy, after five days, we turn them over to the owners. We can't find them, and then I've been anti-kill since I've got here, that's not an option. But in the past, we've had our police department taking care of dogs for a lot more than five days. We've had our public works taking care of the dogs a lot more days. We've had public works people adopt them, we've had city employees adopt them just so they would not be killed. There's, there's times that Dogwood Animal Shelter was at max and they couldn't take them. It cost them about $400 to spay, neuter, chip, so forth. So when I did the math in the meeting, I came up with that figure, cause I was figuring about $33, $33 dogs a year. We also were at the risk, there are some laws out there that we are not licensed to be a dog pound. We are not licensed to be like a Dogwood Animal Shelter, and after five days, we could literally get ourselves in trouble legally if we're not licensed and properly. So it takes a time away from the police officers to have to do that for more than five days. It takes a time away from the public works, so they don't have to care for them more than five days. And we put a clause in there, it's gonna be paid monthly, that at any time, we can revisit it if we feel like there's, we're not utilizing enough. There is also some concerns with the addition of the Oasis complex, the apartment complexes, more people coming to town, that that number could actually go up. So this was a starting point to see how it goes, and we're gonna revisit it each year as ago and pay monthly, and if either sides have a problem with it, we can always adjust. So that's where we came up with the figure.
Part of the issue I also have with this is we are gonna give them $10,000 to basically utilize their services for the city as a public entity for all the animals we turn over to the shelter. As a private citizen, though, if I find a stray dog, I can take it to shelter at no cost to me. So...
No, that's, that's, that's 100% true.
Yes, it is. If, if, if I find a stray or a lost animal or kitten on the side of the road, they're not gonna charge me to take the animal there.
But they don't have to take it.
They don't have to take it.
They don't have to take them.
Yeah, in fact, we've, we've had to charge people in municipal court for taking them to Dogwood, Dogwood wouldn't take them, and then people just drop them in the parking lot and leave. So that, that's the issue, it's, this is the guaranteeing bill.
But there are, there are other rescue organizations that they could utilize other than the Dogwood Animal Shelter as a backup as well. Like I said, I support us going into a partnership with them, I just, I, I, I just don't like the flat fee based on the number of animals we have turned over in the last two years. That's just my two cents.
Alderman Collins.
I agree with Alderman Osteen in that it seems like we don't, we don't know how much use they're going to be, so I would also be much more comfortable with a per-dog rate. Certainly, I don't want the police department, I don't want public works to be taking care of stray dogs. I don't, like Alderman Osteen, all of my animals are rescues, always have been. So certainly, I support animal shelters. I, I just feel like the city is much better served if, at least on a trial basis, we do it, we pay per dog that we take to them. After a year, we see, okay, hey, you know, revisit it and figure out what, what we're actually going to be doing. I think that would be fantastic. I certainly have no problem with the city paying them for the spay, neuter, chipping, I, I, boarding all of the fees that are involved. I just think that, you know, with the number of animals that we've had in the past, it doesn't make sense to pay them this amount of money.
Alderman Hoffman.
Well, I disagree with, with that, that assessment in, in this regard, and I understand where you guys are coming from on the per-dog rate, but there's upfront costs, too. Like, they have to now start prepping their, to, to start taking our dogs and the, the animals that come into the shelter. And I know for a fact that, I've, I've been down there to see the dogs that are, animals that have come in here, and we may not have turned every one of them over, but there was a lot more that came here, and we are putting, you know, we really don't want our police being out being dog handlers. We, we need them out there patrolling the streets and doing what they're supposed to be doing. If this number was a scary number, I'd be more inclined to take a deeper dive into it, but we're talking about $800 a month. I mean, that sounds like one dog to me, a month. You know, maybe two. So, I, I think when you consider the upfront costs and the, how much, how, how often we're actually gonna utilize their service, I, I just think that this, that we're nickel-and-dime it too much. I don't think the 10,000 is scary.
And I'll say this, too. This is, this is a system. It's, it's an easy system to follow. They're here for five days. After the five days, if we can't find the owners or if they've been abandoned, then they go to Dogwood Animal Shelter. They have about an 85% adoption rate. The option, the other option is, if you, if we don't do this, it's a system I really would like us to try. And like I said, we can revisit it after six months or a year, whatever, but the alternative is, okay, they pay per dog. Next week, a dog shows up, he's been here five days, all right, somebody take him to Dogwood, how much does this dog cost? It's already been spayed, it's already been neutered, had him chipped. This one's $400. Okay, so do we put in the budget for the, is it the police decide how much he has left in his budget? Do they need to come to the board and say, by the way, we have two dogs last week, so we need 800 to put in the budget? Who makes those decisions? With this, there's no decision to be made. After five days, they're, they're going to there, they have an 85% success rate, and hopefully a successful home. So I agree with Alderman Hoffman that it's something that it's a, it's a service we can provide to the city, keeps the dogs out of the kill shelters, and if we feel like it's too expensive a year from now to sit down and revisit it, but it's just a system. Alderman Osteen.
So, the paperwork says that there's a max of 33 animals that we can submit to the shelter per year. So you're talking about the numbers on per animal, well, that breaks down to $303 per animal if we were to max out at 33. So for discussing what would that cost be, well, based on the contract itself, $303 per animal, regardless if they've been chipped, spayed, neutered, et cetera, is a flat fee per animal. That covers medical care, maybe they don't need that medical care, maybe it's just room and board, I don't know. But, but once again, I think we're better off doing a per-animal flat fee.
Alderman Rose.
Thank you. Honestly, I'm all for this, but based on how few that we have submitted so far, and not knowing what's coming in the next year, I would think I would recommend instead of 10,000 to save 5,000 and see how that works for a year or two. If all of a sudden we're getting more, then, then we will up it. But, I mean, I understand what all the costs are, but I say instead of 10, they're saying 10,000 based on 33 animals. Well, we have never received or given up that many animals, so that's why I'm saying let's, let's cut back on the amount and go from there.
Well, this, this is simply the $10,000. I mean, if we were to negotiate price, it's, it's either an up or down vote, because this is a contract that we've entered with them. If you save five, then we could stop the process, we could have Cole rewrite it, go back to them, have them make, see if they wanna do it. So, like I said, this is a system that I just thought we would try for the betterment of the community. Yes, sir. Alderman Rucker.
How did we determine $10,000?
That was a figure I came up with in the meeting, because we know the possibility of dogs we had over the five days. It's easy to say we only had two, two years ago or four this year. We had them a heck of a, we, some we had for weeks here. So, that was a figure I came up with, figuring at most it would be 33, and with everybody else coming in, it was a process. I figured that money, like I said, the savings of the time for the police to watch them, public works to watch them, that's where we came up with that. Yes, sir.
Cole? Just a contract that we can bail out within 30 days? I don't think it has our standard terms in it. It's been a while since I've touched it, but it's, we're year to year, and I think... Well, here's my, here's my thought. I can support it, being it's only $800 a month that we're gonna be spending, and I would request that we have a report in six months, and if it's not looking like it's cost-effective, I would support voiding the contract at that time. I think it's worth giving a shot. That's just my own little brain, that's... Yes, yes, it is 30 days. That's, that's standard term. Okay, I just want... I wanna see us move forward. I, I hear the concerns, but also, you know, we need to, we need to support this program and have something so that after those five days, we're, we're not trying to figure out what to do and...
Could, sorry. Alderman Hoffman.
Could we, could we amend this to six months for 5,000 and then readdress it?
Well, it's written, we can get out after 30 days.
It's, it's, we have a 30-day termination option, so it's, it's, from our point of view, it's month to month.
Oh, it's month to month, really?
Effectively. I mean, if, if we wanted to. I, I, that's not what we've committed to, but it's how it...
As they can.
As they can. I can support it with that premise, we're not, we're not locked into $10,000, we're locked into a program, but... Paragraph 15 on page 30. I can support it with that of the packet.
Alderman Hoffman.
Well, that being said, I, I feel like that should ease your fears on us investing in a year if, if in six months, it sounds like none of us really know how many animals are gonna come through here. So if in six months, we wanna get out of this, because we've only had four animals, then, you know, we can get out of it.
Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Collins?
No.
Alderman Rose?
Would you repeat the motion, please?
The motion is as written, knowing that there's a 30-day out clause. If we wanna revisit it after 30 days, we can get out of the contract.
It's, it's a motion to approve it as, as written.
So leave it at 10,000, but if we have a 30-day out, what?
Yeah, the contract as written has a 30-day out.
Okay, all right. I'll say yes.
Alderman Osteen?
No.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Three to two.
It failed.
Can we, sorry, can we recommend they come back?
This bill's failed. Next, moving on to Bill 25-92, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, accepting a contract with Victus Advisors, LLC, to conduct a multi-sports feasibility study for an amount not to exceed $58,000. Marketing and Development Director, Eric Hundelt.
No real updates left yet, I would say.
Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Hoffman.
Could you just, cause I've had a lot of people ask me since the, since the first reading, like, what does this do? Are you guys trying to build a sports complex? Can you outline how we're not trying to build a sports complex, but we're, what we're looking to do, like, this is gonna give us a plan or, or maybe ideas for a plan for the future?
Yeah, I think the idea here is just a couple things. Number one is they'll come in and assess whether or not you should do it. And if you should do it, what sports would we go after? And then based on the sports that they would recommend that we would go after, then that would then dictate what the venue would then be like.
And location, too?
Outdoor, location, etc.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Alderman Rucker.
The other comment, just for the public to listen to, because I've heard some news media people talk about it, we don't know what sport it is. And that's the one thing I've, I've heard, is like, well, what sport is it? Audience, we don't know. That's one of the reasons we're doing this, whether it's gonna be badminton, pickleball, softball, baseball, whatever, whatever. So I, I'm aware of that, but I just wanna make sure that, that the folks out there hear that.
Yeah, we're gonna let the data and then all the research, both quantitative and qualitative, decide what that is for us. Again, keeping in mind, this is supposed to enhance our economic development plan, we're driving traffic, visitors, direct and indirect spending in non-peak periods as well, what our goal is, find out what sports have.
Any other comments? Alderman Collins.
So I wasn't here when you guys originally presented at the last meeting, so I have a few questions. So, there isn't a particular property that we're looking at developing into this? This is just a, should we look for a property? Cause, cause property is pretty limited in Osage Beach, so if we don't, if we don't know where we would put a sports complex, why are we paying to see if, like, you know what I mean? I can't get a bid on where I could put an indoor pool at my house, cause there isn't a spot, so does that make sense?
No, it does, but I think the idea is for us to do the research first, that they are, we should do it. One of the things that we had talked about last week, or our last time, was it's a two-step process. Number one, they'll come in and do the research, determine if we should do it, recommend whether we should do it or not, and if so, where would we put it? Then if we agree to go to the next level, then they would start helping us with site selection, type of venue building, et cetera.
Okay, and assuming that we make it through the feasibility study and they recommend, yep, you should absolutely do this, is it something like, that we would use public money to build a sports complex that would be like part of the parks department? Or would we then invite in, for economic development, invite in developers to come use the study that we paid for to...
Well, one of the things we talked about, yes, public money, but then we also said, is there an opportunity for some type of commercial investment as well? And then we would seek that out once we knew what it is if we were gonna go back there.
Okay, and then I think, I think my last question, did, did they not do, didn't the, like, Visitors Bureau do a study on this a few years ago? Same, I know?
Alderman Rucker?
I believe what you may be thinking of is when the sports comp, or the soccer complex was, had talked about and there was just a movement to do a soccer field program. But I don't believe there was a feasibility study to say, well, do we want soccer or do we want baseball? And that's what this one here is doing. This is, in my opinion, we're opening it up wide open to see, you know, maybe there's some kind of a sporting activity out there that we're not even aware of it. And that's why it's difficult to say how much space we need because do we need 10 soccer fields or do we need 20 pickleball courts that you can put inside a lot smaller building? I mean, so that's why it's difficult. And that's why this one is in two phases, too.
And I do really like the two phases. And listen, I think that there's, I personally think that there's probably a need for destination sports at the lake. I hear about it often. I'm just wondering if we're spending the money to do this feasibility study and we don't have the property in Osage Beach to actually do the project? And so then we're essentially doing a study only for it to end up in Lynn Creek or Lake Ozark on some other piece of land? Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but that's not going to happen. You know, what I would tell you is, is that we do have properties in town that the city can look at to develop. There's multiple, not to mention that there's around three acres right behind the city hall. You know, the feasibility of what they're looking at can be anything from, yes, we have found that it is feasible and you all can support this small amount of sporting. Or they could come back and say, we think that you could support, you know, five soccer fields and a gym and all these things, like Alderman Rucker said. What we're trying to find out now is, is it feasible for the city of Osage Beach along with the lake area? Because they can't just come from here, you know, to support the facility itself. If they come back and say, man, we don't think you all can support it, then we have our answer. You know, we can't support it.
Yeah, we spent a whole lot of money to get to that.
Exactly right. But unfortunately, you know, if we don't spend the money, we're taking a shot in the dark and saying, we think we can. You know, that's just, that's part and parcel to it. I don't expect that they would come back and say that the city of Osage Beach and the lake area with the growth that we're seeing can't support any. At the same time, I don't expect for them to come back and tell us that we can handle a sports facility like I spend my weekends at that have, you know, 16 softball fields and pickleball and all of these things. So I think that what I would suspect we will see is something more on the sizes that we can handle, what we would more project that we could do. And then once that happens, then it comes back to decide how we want to approach it financially, you know, where do we go get the money? What properties do we look at? You know, that's something that we can hire this group to help us, you know, locate properties if we need to do that. We've got quite a bit of flat property in town that is actually available, large-scale properties, 200 acres, give or take, you know, on several places. So we would have options. And if those options didn't work, then we would need to figure out something else. We could, you know, actually annex if, you know, if we wanted to, to bring in properties that we could then use. So there's multiple things that we can do. I think the main thing that we're trying to figure out right now is, is it even for us? You know, I think there's, you know, a lot of the citizens have pushed this out that we would like to see what, you know, what it can do. And I think that this is the city saying, okay, we'll check it out, see what's out there.
I agree, because I think, like I said, I think that there's, I think we're a really good candidate for it and it would be great in, you know, spring and fall, even winter, when we don't have as much visitors here. I guess I had in my head like the Overland Park Shields Sports Complex and I'm like...
I don't think that's, yeah, I think, you know, I think that we're looking at something that can meet where we're at now, that can also grow with us.
Okay.
You know?
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Osteen, is there a second? Alderman Muroz, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Bill 25-92 passes.
Is that a roll call? That's a second reading.
Call, Cole, sorry about that.
Thank you.
You're batting under the Mendoza line today.
I know.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Muroz?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Muroz?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Muroz?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Muroz?
Yes.
Alderman Muroz?
All right, now Bill 25-92 passes. All right, moving on to new business. Bill 25-93, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Arrowhead Centered Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan. City Attorney, Cole Bradbury.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As you'll recall, this, so this is the part of the Arrowhead redevelopment project that we sent to the TIF Commission back this summer. It passed through the TIF Commission unanimously in August, I believe. It was a 7-0 vote. It was the shortest TIF Commission meeting, I think, in city history. This is not really the guts of what we've been discussing. This is just the clearing of the, or the combining of the RPAs into a single redevelopment area. The main work that we have to do is still yet to come, but we are required by state statute to bring this to the board within a certain time period, up to 90 days after the TIF Commission meeting, and we are coming up on that deadline. So this is the first reading of that plan amendment, which is, as you can see, is extremely short, but was unanimously approved by the TIF Commission. And again, I know we've discussed some of the issues with this project. Those are not in front of you tonight, but we have given them clear guidance on what we expect, when we expect it. So this is really just the appetizer, if you will. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Bill 25-93 passes. Next, we have Bill 25-94, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing expenditure of funds for promotion efforts in support of the Midwest Blue Oval Club for the Mount Not to Seize $500. And we already heard from this gentleman, and now Devin Lake?
Good evening. As Mr. Rutherford spoke to earlier, this is a request from his organization for a $500 donation for a car show.
All right. Comments, questions? Alderman Hoffman.
When is the car show?
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday? Does this donation go towards advertising or it just goes, like, what are you using our funds for?
This donation would go right into the general fund.
Well, it just goes into your general fund, essentially. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Comment?
Yes, sir.
What's the date received this application? Because the date stamp is wrong. It says September 42nd.
42nd?
That's what it says on the date stamp.
Oh, it was only four days ago. And there's not 42 days in September.
Well, you know, you never know. Hey, you're in my world now.
Since this is in the board packet, I think we need to have a corrected...
She's from Colorado.
22nd, you think?
Did I stand that? Is it my initial?
Yeah. Well, I don't know. It's city clerk, there's no initial.
Your stamp. My stamp. Okay, well, that's what I mean. Okay, we received that.
Request is dated September 23rd.
Okay, so I got it on the 24th. Yeah, I got it on the 24th. 42nd, you know, a little bit of that, you know.
Just got out of catch everything, don't you?
I am a Broncos fan, right?
Alderman Osteen.
Just one comment for the organization. Next year, ask sooner and ask for more.
Any more comments, questions? And I'll be judging out there a week from Saturday. All those in, wait, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Ooh. Alderman Osteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Bill 25-94, approve first reading.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
This is happening in two weeks. Shouldn't we have done this as a first and second?
I just was looking with the same thought.
They were going to, but they knew you don't like first and seconds.
Well, I think they have a good read for the ones that squeak through.
Well, my guess is, since it is first reading, I mean, we can't change it now, but my guess is we're good for the money if it does approve second reading.
Correct.
But just so they understand, a second reading will be two weeks from now until...
Five to three.
I think we're good for it.
November 6th, so three weeks from now.
Three weeks, that's right. We're still good for it, maybe. Okay, next we have a resolution, Bill 25-29, a resolution of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend a transfer of budget expenditures for final fiscal year 2025 to cover change order number two for the Osage Beach Road Improvement Project. Public Works Director, Jeff Fisher.
I would like to suggest tabling items C, D, and E till the next meeting to give staff a little bit more time to meet with both parties, the consulting firm and the contractor, and see if we can't align around something acceptable to all parties, particularly with the city.
Alderman Rucker.
Since this one bill, since this bill deals with two other items, can we table all three at once or do we have to do them separately?
Best practice would be individual, but I'd...
Okay. I'm surprised you even asked that.
Well, Alderman Hoffman. As long, honestly, I mean, I think, could you get away with doing it the other way? As long as the minutes reflect it, yes, but...
We couldn't because it's a resolution and a bill and a bill. Correct?
Motion to table. All right, we have a motion to table resolution 20-25-29. Is there a second?
My second.
Alderman Collins, is it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, since I've already discussed it, I'm gonna go ahead. Is there a motion to, I don't have to read it. Is there a motion to table Bill 25-96?
Motion to table.
Alderman Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Last part of this equation, we have Bill 25-95, do I have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Alderman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Osteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. 20-25-29 is also been tabled. Next, we have a motion to approve the installation of eight high-tie Generation 2 cellular SCADA units for the drinking water system for municipal equipment for a mountain not to exceed $29,920. Jeff Fisher, please.
Thanks again. These are the units that sewer also installed in the sewer system this year. It was always the intention to do the same with water. This is the telemetry system. It's an update in technology so that staff can monitor and even control the system remotely.
Comments from the board? Alderman Osteen.
Would this be a 2025 expense or would it carry into 2026?
This would be 25.
Okay. Just curious on the timeframe for installation.
Yeah, we're running a little late, but we'll get it done.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Muroz, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Do I have another motion to approve the updates to fixed asset policies and procedures? City Treasurer, Carrie Bell.
Yes, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Last July, when the auditors were here as part of their presentation of the auditor's communication and compliance report, some of the comments that they made or suggestions for improvement had to do with capital assets and our ever-growing volume of capital assets in the city and the need to raise our capitalization limit from 2,000 to 5,000 to be more manageable and financially, covers all the financial issues. You know, what we're seeing is a lot of this, what used to be just ordinary tools that Public Works purchases are now above that $2,000 limit. So we're just overwhelmed. Those items will still be inventory to maintain at the department level, but they will just, they won't be on the city's financial statements. So they suggested that we also do a physical inventory. I'm just going to go ahead and backtrack to what the auditor, the bigger picture, what the auditor said about our assets. They wanted a physical inventory to kind of go through, and I'm going to tell the board right now, we're not going to get that done in '25, covering for the two HR positions. And also, the staff accountant has been working very closely with the city administrator to develop a five-year capital asset plan. And actually, through that process, we've been able to find some assets and do some research on them through that. So we are making improvements. We're just going to table the actual touching of each and every city asset in '25. So on page 85, you have the old policy. They were so different, I didn't do a red line or try to compare the two because there was just too much age difference. So you've got the old policy on page 85, you've got the new policy on page 81, and I do recommend that we go from the 2,000 to the $5,000 capitalization limit. So if you have any questions on the new policy, be happy to answer those.
Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Osteen.
Just comments. Kudos for trying to update this since our last capitalization chart was established in 2007, which some of those numbers I find a little interesting, such as there's a capitalization of seven years on dredging, which I'm not sure who came up with those numbers and how you ever would. So anyway, kudos for trying to update that because obviously it's been long overdue.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alderman Muroz, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Last item of business, we have a motion to approve the purchase of a new playground equipment. Eric Gregory, Parks and Recreation Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. I'm going to stand back here so I'm not staring up at everybody. In review, as you all know, Parks Department had some cost savings from a park improvement project back in May of this year, and I came forward and proposed a new playground for Peacock Park. Of the two parks, it needs the most improvements. Unfortunately, we had to take out one of the playgrounds three years ago due to age and the inability to get new replacement parts for it. The current playground that is at Peacock is for smaller children, five and under. We really need a playground for five to 12-year-olds. So I proposed this at Board of Aldermen meeting in September, and you all granted permission to move forward with accepting bids from playground companies and also to conduct a public survey to help choose the playground. We did have a playground committee meet on October 1st. I'd like to say thank you to everybody that participated in that, including Devin and April and Tara and several others from City Hall. There was a lot of behind-the-scenes work to this, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. We had over 20 renderings and choices to choose from. The playground committee narrowed it down to three. And we opened up a public vote via social media from October 9th to October 13th, including having renderings at our Fall Festival that we made available, so including online, they could vote at Fall Festival. And Holly Jarvis, our Public Information Officer, worked very hard to put that survey together. I'd like to thank her. She also put together this very nice short PowerPoint. So I'm going to follow along on my sheet here because I can't see that far. I'm old. So we had narrowed it down to three playground options. This is option number one. Go to number two. Option number two. And option number three. All of them were very nice. This was a very difficult choice. And just to give you a little background information and some statistics, we had 744 responses overall, 37.5% for Playground 1, 56.6% for Playground 2, and I can't see the third one. So, next one? Of Osage Beach residents only, Playground 1 received 30.9% of the votes, Playground 3, 6.9%, and Playground 2, 62.2%. Which option best describes where you live? I'm definitely going to read this one off my sheet here. Twenty-seven point four percent was Osage Beach residents, 28.5% Camden County residents, surrounding area residents, 27.8% with tourists or visitors at 11.8%. So captured a lot of very good data here, a lot of good input from not only Osage Beach residents, but local residents and out-of-town people. So that brings us to the winner, which was Playground Two. Very nice playground, me personally, I think for the, yes, ma'am?
So, I thought it was three. This is Playground Three on my paper.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. It's Playground Two, sorry.
That's all right.
That was a typo. Playground Two.
That's the one that I saw online that I thought.
I thought, oh, I like three better, okay.
Playground Two.
All right.
Overall, and again, personally, I thought that this playground, for the budget, offers the most options, recreational options. I'd also like to point out that this was in the Parks Master Plan as part of the three-phase park improvement plan, which is to include a playground, shelter, and splash pad. This is something that we can build on, although it's not the big destination playground that we had in mind. We can add to it in the future, and I would like to add more inclusive features for children with disabilities. So we will probably reach out to the community and see if we can do some community partnerships and, and add to it. I also wanna point out that the playground company, Burke, does offer the cooperative purchasing options, including Sourcewell, which the city uses. So, last slide, the final budget was $197,933, which we were allotted $200,000, so we kept under budget. And I think that this would be a great addition to Peenick Park and for the community. And I do represent, or I do recommend approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Collins?
In the previous discussion, you had said something about that there might be grants available to help with this. Does the pricing that you're giving us include that grant, or have you applied for it?
No, no. There was, we were going to apply for the grant for another project, and that's on hold right now.
Okay.
Yes.
And then what kind of timeline for the playground to be played on?
Spring.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the port-in-place surfacing has to be at a certain temperature when you put it in, and we're running out of time.
Understood, yeah.
So if the board approves this, first reading, then after the second reading, on November 7th, I reach out to the playground company and move forward with purchasing. So I would love to see it there before Memorial Day of next year.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Alderman Osteen?
When this was first presented to us, there were some questions and concerns regarding how this would affect the budgeting, whether this would require a budget adjustment. Since the park was its own line item, I remember we had these discussions on how the funds are being transferred because we're considering a cost savings for one project that basically we're gonna use, utilize for another project. I don't know if we ever got that resolved on if we were presenting this accurately on the budgeting and financial side.
This is under Parks Improvements, and this is a park improvement. That's the line item that Hatchery Road was budgeted out of, so that will be the line item this is paid out of.
Okay, my second question is, is this a cost that's actualized in 2025, or is this something we're budgeting for 2026? Because installation won't be until '26.
It will be purchased out of the '25 budget.
Okay.
Alderman Rucker?
I am not in favor of moving forward at this time. This is not a budgeted item. It needs to be following our normal procedures of budgeting and purchasing, and we are not doing that. Yes, it will come out of the line item for park improvements. But if you look at your budget, and I didn't make copies for everybody, but if you look at your budget on page thirty, excuse me, 62, where park improvement line item is at, you look at the page prior to that, page 61, under capital expansion, and the items that make up that 400-some-odd, well, actually, the original budget was 320,000, and it was amended up to the 400-some-odd thousand because of the bathroom that was not done in '24, that moved forward to '25, okay? But in '25, the budget items that were approved was the flagpole, the Hatchery Road, and the park bathroom. Those were the items. Just because this line item is park improvement, we did not and have not in the past approved $320,000 and say, just go spend it wherever you want for park improvements. We support that line item with in-depth items in our budget. And that is not included, that playground is not included in there. We've done budget adjustments on other things, and we include those items. We did a budget adjustment recently to do the boiler issue here at City Hall, and we listed that as a line item. We don't list every hammer and nickel-and-dime thing, but items of significant amount are listed historically in the budget. You can go back to page 33 where we list all the capital items, and there's multiple pages of items. Each one of those items is not in the budget, but they make up a part of the budget. So to say this is in the budget, I disagree with that. Park improvements is in the budget. This item, which is a significant amount, almost $200,000, is not listed in this budget. And that's the first process that we need to be doing. That's step number one, as far as I'm concerned. Step number two is the fact that historically, as far as I know, when a prod, when a, when an item in a budget is under-budgeted, that amount of money doesn't specifically stay with that department. It goes back into the kitty, so to speak, or to the, to the pile of money, and then we redistribute that to wherever we want to. We were over-budget significantly with the, the heating system that occurred here at City Hall. We had to find the money somewhere else. That's, you know, that, that came from the pool, okay? So to say that this money is just available to stay in parks just because it was in parks, I disagree with that. So there's a process that we are eliminating, and I'm not, I, I support playgrounds down there. I took my granddaughter down there and was embarrassed that she didn't have anything to play with. I support that. But there's a process, folks, and we're not doing it on this, and that's why I'm opposed to it.
April White, please.
Yeah, it definitely was not in the budget, but that's why we're bringing it to you all, rather than like, oh, we have room in this line item, so we're just gonna, you know, do this. We're bringing it to you all because we know, you know, it was not an originally budgeted item. So the reason Ron, you know, the HVAC issue, the, the raining of the Lycall came to you because that was definitely a budget amendment because there was no room left in that line item. Where this is, there's room left in the line item, it just wasn't an originally budgeted item. So I, that's why we're bringing it to you for approval.
I, okay, follow. I, I don't have any problem with the fact that there is there, but just to say it's in the budget or, or budget, it's not. Okay, I understand there could be room for it, but there also could be room to take that couple hundred thousand dollars that we didn't spend and put it back into the, the CIT fund and redistribute it somewhere else. And that's the thing, we're asking, we're asking to make a motion to purchase this. It's not in the budget. There's a process that should be done before we come to this purchase side. Again, I'm not saying where I'm gonna vote in favor or not in favor of purchasing it, but there's a process that we need to do that we're not doing. That's my point.
Real quick, Eric, Alderman Hoffman's been waiting since.
I would've had a problem, I would've agreed with you if they had went and done it, if the staff just went and did it and said, oh, well, this is an improvement, so let's go do it. To me, this is how the process could improve. This is how the budget maybe has been done forever, but this, to me, is a way that the budget process could improve over time. Hey, we've got some money, we've got an idea, but let's take it to the board, let's see what they say. So I applaud that you, they didn't just do it, they brought it to us, and now we get to determine whether or not we think it's a good idea to spend the money on it. And I do, so I'm in support of this.
Eric, please.
I'd like to point out that this particular playground company was the only one that offered an internal grant to get it to that price point, but that's only if it is purchased in 2025. If it, we have to wait and purchase it next year, I do not think it will be under budget.
Alderman Osteen?
I support this 100%, and I've stated this on record already. But I, as well as Alderman Rucker, have stated, I believe the process is skewed on how this should have been presented to us. I think maybe to meet the middle ground is have the staff come back to us with a budget adjustment or an amendment for this equipment, as opposed to us approving it as it stands right now. Because I've said this, since it's brought to us, I felt like the process was off somehow. And Alderman Rucker agreed that we weren't following the correct steps. And I understand the staffing's point of view on that as well, but I think to placate everybody, maybe that's the route we go to keep moving forward with this project.
Cole?
I just wanted to point out that there is no budget amendment needed because the money is already in the right line item for this project. Now, this project requires board approval, I think Alderman, the way Alderman Hoffman explained it. But to do what Alderman Rucker was saying, that said, well, if we don't spend that money, it should go back into CIT, that requires a budget amendment because this money would have to come out of the Parks budget and go back into somewhere else in general fund. So that the comparison to the other things we had to do for, for the issues that were brought up, that's because there was no money left in that line item. We shift money around in line items all the time. When we say, well, you know, this, this prod, this bid came in over budget, but that's okay because we have money left over because the following things in that same line item came in under budget. We do that all the time. We still explain it to you, we still make sure the board's on, on board, but the budget amendment you're asking for would literally say, we would like to take $200,000 out of park improvements and put it in park improvements. That's the budget amendment you're asking for. There's, there's no budget amendment needed. There is approval for the project because it's not.
Couldn't it maybe just on, on the project itself? If it had to be a transfer of funds, it's basically gonna be that we're gonna utilize funds in this line item for this project, move into this one. It's still the same pool, which we keep explaining that, but I feel like we should designate this in the budget itself that we're gonna basically designate money for this specific project, not just say catch-all, whatever falls under that line item is what we're gonna spend the money on.
That, that's what this bu, this motion does. This motion directs staff to spend money out of that budget line item, which covers this project, on this project.
But we don't have to adjust the budget at all, or even add in the line item for this improvement to the park?
It's, it's a park improvement.
I still feel like this is wrong. I support it, but I feel like it's wrong.
I will say this. First and foremost, we are in need of more family-friendly things for our local people. This fits that bill. The people that looked at this at the last weekend, came by and voted, so many people came by at my booth and said, man, we need to have this, we need to have this. For our locals, for them have to, some things to do, we need this. I trust our city administrator, assistant, city administrator, and our legal telling us, we're good. I trust them, and I hope this moves forward for the good of our citizens of Osage Beach. So, Alderman Moros?
Well, it was in the budget for park road paving improvement, and because we didn't spend all that money, it's still under park improvement, the way I look at it. And, and there's a need for playground, which is still park improvement. And I, that's the way I look at it, and I think we should move on and approve it.
Any other comments or questions? See, and then do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Moros, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen?
I have always been a yes for this, but once again, I just want to on record state, I think we're going about this wrong in the process, but I'm a yes.
Alderman Moros?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
No.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Barella?
All right, motion approves. We're gonna move on to our staff communications, and we'll start with the city administrator, Devin Lake, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I wanted to brag on Keegan and April. We put, they put on an employee development day yesterday that was awesome. We had Patrick Henry and Renee Slack come in and do two presentations, both for our line-level employees and for our managers, and it was amazing. And I'm so glad that we were able to do that, and I hope that we are able to continue that in years to come. And I also want to thank the board for such a smooth budget process this year. It has been amazing, and I appreciate all your guys' help and questions and talking and discussion. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you much. Assistant City Administrator, April White?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to comment on yesterday's employee development day as well, and I gave you all the copy of the pamphlet that Holly Jarvis designed so well, and it has our sponsors on back. And then I gave you a couple pictures just so you could kind of get a visual of what it looked like. And as many, most of you know that Devin and I kind of came up with this in response to the numerous comments on the employee survey regarding their desires to feel valued and invested in. So, and it was also kind of designed to help with the, your all's direction on succession planning. So our tagline for the event, event was investing in our future leaders. So we brought in those two high-quality speakers in-house to facilitate that growth and development, you know, personally and professionally. And it, over 55% attendance, so it was good. We've had a lot of feedback already, positive, like thanking us for that, and also some good ideas for future events. But 44 employees in the morning session, which was designed for like our line level and non-supervisory staff, and then 18 employees in the afternoon session, which was designed for supervisors and managers. Holly did record the session, so we will make that available to employees who weren't able to be there. And a survey's gonna go out to all the other employees so we can get feedback on how to make it better in the future. I wanted to go ahead and recognize our sponsors publicly because it couldn't have happened without them. So Municipal Equipment Company, Central Bank of Lake of the Ozarks, GovDeals, Midwest Public Risk, Wilson &amp; Company, Centos, The Oaks Golf Club, Mission Square, and First Mid Bank and Trust. Kyle, the sales rep from our uniform provider, Centos, he provided a fully catered delicious barbecue meal for everyone yesterday, or for all attendees. So it was delicious, everyone loved that part as well. We also provided breakfast for all the attendees. And a huge thank you to Deputy Clerk Keegan Powers because like Devin said, this event would not have been possible but without her remarkable planning, organizational efforts. That's definitely a gift of hers. She thinks of everything, every detail. And then Devin and I plan to do one to two of these each year, hopefully, as sponsors allow and as budget allows. Also, I wanted to remind everyone of the health fair on October 30th. I'm sure everyone has seen the emails from Caitlin, who was helping out during HR absence. If everyone could please, if you haven't already, by next Wednesday. We're running out of spaces, so sooner the better. And then that night also, just a reminder to the board, is the Midwest Public Risk meeting. At 5:00 or 5:30?
5:30.
5:30. Last thing, I'm sure Eric will talk about this a little bit, but the Fall Fest was spectacular. I don't know who all attended, but I think a record number of vendors, I'll let you go into that. But the addition of the corn crib was a success. There were kids in that thing all day long, just getting filthy. Our granddaughter, we had to peel her out of there. Took her a little while to get in there, but once in, she was not coming out, except by a hard yank of the right leg. Thank you to Tara, Keegan, and Annie for manning the city booth, handing out all kinds of city swag, and great job to Eric and Caitlin and all the Parks staff. I thought it was a great event. That's all I have.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Tara, you have anything to add?
Um, no. Great job, everybody, for the, Keegan and everybody. It was really, I was pleasantly surprised at how good it was. How the employee, appreciate, are their employee, Betterment Day.
Very good. Cole, you have anything?
I have a few things. So I apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I was traveling with family and then on my way to the American Association of Airport Executives Airport Law Conference. Airport law, for those of you who don't know, is a, its own weird thing. It has nothing to do with anything else, and if you've never had an airport, you don't know, and I didn't know. So I went, thank you very much to the city for sending me, and I came up with some, had got, came back with a lot of interesting ideas, and Ty's probably gonna hate me for the rest of the year, so. Also, I want to say great job to Eric and Caitlin and the rest of the Parks staff on the job hold on Fall Festival. My kids went, they loved it. I don't get to talk about some of the things I do sometimes on the dais, but I do just want to say to Jeff, thank you, and Chris, and Stevie for all of your hard work the last couple of weeks. Uh, Stevie in particular, and Chris have put in some hours for me, and I appreciate that. And then last but not least, today is my, the start of my 11th year on the Chamber Board. Chamber Fall Dinner is, Annual Dinner is next Thursday. If you have not gotten your RSVPs, Tara, they're due tomorrow.
I have everybody.
Yep.
I don't have Celeste.
It's, it's a great event.
I have everybody else.
All right, Lieutenant Taylor?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
All right. Mr. White?
I, just so I don't repeat, I was actually gonna say everything that April said, so I'll just ditto her. Thank you.
All right. Ty Airport?
Nothing to add, sir, thank you.
All right, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, just to echo what April said, uh, thank you to everybody, Annie and Tara and Keegan for volunteering from City Hall for the city tent. And a big thank you to the Parks team, Caitlin, Joey, Shay, and Dan, and Dan Field, who is one of our seasonals, worked very hard getting the park ready. We had a count of 4,500 people, and I think that's on the conservative side. I think honestly, it was well over 5,000. The weather was perfect. Even though we had to move some stuff to Soccer Field One at the last minute due to rain the next morning, everybody had smiles on their face. everybody had smiles on their face. And yeah, the corn pit was a hit. I didn't know what a corn pit was the week before that and so, yeah, we had a corn pit and it was great. So anyway, thank you to everybody for coming to the Fall Festival and we have plans to make it even better next year.
All right, good. Eric Cundell, marketing.
Yeah, so yesterday's program was really good and as I was talking to Devon, I think one of the things that really jumped out at me was Renee Slack. She was hitting on some of the elements of the seven habits of highly effective people. And in it, she got into the whole idea of mission statement. Not only what's your personal mission statement, but what's the mission statement of the city? And ironically enough, that Devon and April, myself have been working on this. And as you guys know, I've talked to pretty much all the department heads and all of you all, just talking about the city, how's it going, thoughts around economic development and whatnot. And I rolled that up into a new mission statement for the city. And what I did is, I was going to present it at the next board meeting, but then we decided today, we mailed it out to all employees with the opportunity to put some feedback in. So they have the recommended mission statement along with a few other options to come back to us with. Some that can represent the city, the citizens, the employees, current business, new business, tourists, second homeowners, et cetera. So that's all in your inbox. I'd love to get some feedback by maybe a week from now so that I could then roll it up with the goal of, with our next board meeting to put it forward for a vote. So thank you. And nice job to everybody that put that together. That was really good.
Jeff Fisher, public works.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Carrie Bell, treasurer.
I like this one. Yes, I would like to give out another thank you to Selena Torren, April, for holding down the fort on the HR and the payroll process. If there, if any little odd thing could happen, it has happened in the last couple of payroll cycles. And they have just hung in there and worked through everything to make sure everybody got their paychecks on time. And thank you for all of that. We do have a new utility clerk, a fresh face on the City Hall side. Amber Feeny is, has joined our team and please introduce yourself when you're in City Hall to her and make her feel welcome. That's all I have this evening.
Very good. Carrie Patterson, city planner.
I have nothing to add, mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Collins.
So I just wanted to say to Eric, I hear, I was not able to make it to the Fall Festival. I was doing Harbor Hop and, but everybody that I talked to that went just absolutely raved about it. So I didn't hear one single person complain about anything, which is kind of unheard of for me. So it was a beautiful day and I hear that it just went off without a hitch and so, yeah, kudos to you.
Alderman Moros.
It was a beautiful weekend that we were blessed with, that's for sure. Harbor Hop was a huge success this year, which I was there helping with Harbor Hop. So unfortunately, I was not also able to attend the City, the City Fall Festival. But I've heard nothing but rave reviews. I sent you the letter regarding that. And the pictures looked great, looked like the children were all having a wonderful time. The Parkway is getting to be so impressive. And it's exciting to watch Dance Brothers at work, but anyway, exciting to see the final result, but it's looking good. Yeah, thank you. That's it.
Alderman.
I've got a few quick things. Once again, like everybody else, kudos on the Fall Festival. I've heard very glowing and positive things about it. Sorry I did not attend. I was at Harbor Hop as well. I was drunk at noon, so probably good I wasn't at the Fall Harbor, the Fall Festival. I would like to, once again, thank the sponsors for our employee development event. I think it's great that outside organization and businesses are investing time and money into helping to advance and improve our staff. I think that speaks a lot about the support system we have throughout the area on wanting the city to succeed. I know that we as a board will meet before the next scheduled board meeting, November 6th. But I just wanted to wish all staff and anybody listening, our citizens, a happy and safe Halloween. November 2nd is daylight savings time, so next month, we will be attending these meetings. It'll be night already. So everybody get ready for my seasonal depression disorder because I suffer from it terribly when it's night at 5 o'clock.
So bring your flashlights.
Yes, that's all I have.
Very good. Alderman Hoffman.
Good luck to our new car show in town. Wish you the best. Always, always cool to have car shows at the lake. Keegan, I'm sorry if you're listening. I had planned on attending this and my schedule got just swamped on Wednesday, but kudos to the city. I heard this went really well from everybody, so a job well done. And I too was harbor hopping right next to Alderman Collins for about half the time. Doubt she remembers it, but.
She was on a boat with me.
But, but I too heard nothing but great things about the Fall Festival, so job well done to the entire staff. That's it.
Alderman Rucker.
Well, again, there's been on social media, even though I'd somewhat get concerned with spending too much of my time on social media, but there was a lot of pluses on there with, with the activities of the Fall Festival and a lot of kudos for that, so that was great. Ron, could you give us an update on where we are at in reference to the situation that occurred here at City Hall with the heating or cooling system and just kind of where we're at with that? Sorry.
This one's dead. Can I have the live one?
I think we need to put in the budget new microphone.
Yeah.
Or just have somebody put batteries in before the meeting.
Wow, like.
So the update on that, we are working with US Disaster Relief. Their overall, their final bid went to our insurance adjuster. They're negotiating the final steps of that and we should have an answer back within the next few days from the adjuster. So we, as far, the last thing we were waiting on was the bid for the carpet replacement that got ruined. And we are wanting to replace all the carpet on this side of the building so that we don't have a patchwork done. No offense to quilters, they're beautiful.
Any expectation on completion? Month, two months?
My estimation would be a few weeks. Yeah, I don't think it'll take that long. The biggest chore is going to be the carpet because it's going to require us moving all of the cubicles and all the furniture. But we are doing the square tiles, so we'll be able to move all the furniture to one side. The big area out here where a lot of the finance and clerks, employees sit, that's going to be the most challenging, but we do have plenty of help and a lot of strong backs, so I don't think it'll take more than a month.
Well, on that project, I didn't, didn't reflect it in the past, but I want to say thanks to the staff because I do know that Ron had reported and, and I failed to mention it. But thanks to the staff for stepping up when it happened. Otherwise, it could have been a hell lot worse than what it was and the water or whatever that stuff was could have.
Glycol.
Yeah, it could have went further places, so appreciate the staff stepping up and helping out with that. Thank you.
Their, their fast action saves several hundred gallons of that, more of coming out. So it was, yeah, tremendous effort on everybody's part. Thank you for mentioning that.
All right, very good. Thank you. Well, and I'll just kind of lead off with that too. US Disaster has been very good to work with. When I met them out here that day and they were of the disaster. And then that night, I came out later, they were working at night. The next day, walked in to see that, what they were doing. And if I remember right, because I get to see the bills, it was less than we anticipated at the time.
Yes.
And so, yeah, they've done a really nice job, so kudos to them. Sound like a broken record, but Fall Festival, Eric, great job. I did have a booth there, so I was not at Harbor Hop. But no, I had a booth right next to City Hall and boy, the amount of kids and families and people and enjoying the dog park. And they were short of one person or two people for the pie eating contest. As much as Eric Gregory tried to get me to do it again, there was no way. That was a one and done thing a few years ago. But watching the pie eating contest was pretty cool as well, so great job. Last thing is just, I wanted to compliment Devon and April and the, and the rest of the staff and the board. I mean, for our budget meetings, I think it went very well this year. I think we had a new system last year. We really didn't know with Devon being new on the board, how it was going to go. We ended up in four meetings and I think the last two meetings, we actually came in before our time was up. It helped tremendously, I believe, that staff came to the board prior to the budget meetings and kind of said, here's what we're kind of thinking about doing. So they knew what to ask for and not what not to ask for, but all of the, everybody up here, down there in these buildings here really take a vested interest in where to spend taxpayer dollars. And so just thank you to everybody that participated in that. With that, that's all I have. So if nobody else has anything, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Moros, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.